And let them pay for the whole thing. We're taking everybody else's issue and everybody says to us, when we ask them for money, they say, "Come on, guys, you're Atherton."
That's what everybody says.
But Atherton, you know, Atherton is, forgive me, Jack, but Atherton has got quite a number of jacks and gyms that are, that we don't have any property revenue coming from them. So it's all falling on everybody else. The town does, by the way, we should probably say, for people who do want to pay extra money, the town is a charitable donation location. We've got a 501, right? We can go ahead and take, you can pay as much as you'd like, Jack.
Thank you.
But everybody else doesn't have to pay.
Do we have a 501, C3?
No. But there's another, it's another number.
But I would like to say about the drainage.
Drainage, okay.
It's not a C3 or C4, but it's a 501.
We need to have far more aggressive attitude with places like Riverside, McCullough Valley, City, all these people that feed into this. And I personally would like to see a one issue for all of the cities that are bringing water to our channels. And, you know, in the past, every time we've asked them for money, they've said, "Oh, yours." You know? And I think we need a far better, more aggressive position. Somehow, I'd love to see a legal position that we could force them to start paying for the water that they're delivering.
We can't damn them.
Well...
They're up till, no, I don't mean damn them.
If you've seen the water, as we've all done, coming up, it's pouring down here.
Yes, it is, yeah.
It's a whole river sometimes.
Phil has done a good job taking us all around.
So getting back to what Kerry was saying about using our capital, parcel tax money from capital purposes, I mean, we have the Marsh Road channel that we need to be saving money for to repair and maybe even covering the one along Watkins, you know, and kind of, so that kind of drainage issue could be allocated.
Watkins especially is extremely ugly.
It's extremely ugly. It could be so much nicer and it's dangerous and that bridge going into the park is gonna fall down. It's so bad.
We could fix the bike path along there, too, same as we're talking about here.
Exactly. It could be a nice wooden thing, so if it opens, if it overflows, it over, I mean, the technology is there, so I'd love to do that. So, okay, all right. Did we already open it? We did.
We did.
We did.
Can I make one comment?
Okay, just one. Or two, or three.
The Prop 1A provided congestion money.
Yes.
And other cities are taking advantage of it. And I think I set a record last week of driving from Middlefield up to 101 in 20 minutes without an accident.
Well, that's rare because...
20 minutes, it was five-thirds.
Well, there we go.
But I'm saying that you could justify congestion in that area that would get some of that Prop 1A money that's congestion money.
MTC's got, what, $90 million that they're doling out right now in grants?
In grants?
We pay a ton of money.
And we, but we, we apply. So just to respond to your grant, I think, Mike Khashawagi did apply to the MTC for, you know, this grant and, you know, whether we get anything or not. But that is something I think that we should really focus on, because I know staff is overworked as it is and you can find a firm that specializes in finding grants.
Yeah, I can even, maybe because I talked to these guys at the league, but I'm sure that we all get them. My next time, I'll forward them around in case other people haven't seen them, but there are people that will do the grants for you and they're experienced in doing.
Well, 1A money is ours. I mean, we're putting into that prop and we should, and I would think, Mike...
Does that measure 1A? Measure?
No, it's a tax that, we talk about all the time when we get the...
Measure A.
It's measuring.
Measure A.
Yeah, it's not 1A, it's measure A.
But congestion money in there, it's available if we can demonstrate the need.
And the way the grants is political as well as everything else. And we need somebody that will, and the past, I mean, Mike probably does a good job asking for the money, but, you know, when you get into politics, you need somebody that can also handle the political side of it. My feeling is that we will do want to find somebody to know whether to...
Greg Redding pursues bloodhound work and it's certainly something that's a full-time occupation, but we receive $250,000 a year in measure A.
I was trying to get that to the crossing here at Watkins.
There's grants beyond that that are...
Yeah, the grants, well, right now, they're going through Pacifica. They're trying to make it four lanes and I don't know how much money they're spending, but it's a lot. And there's a lot of reason why we couldn't justify, I mean, there's less congestion than I realize over here in this 20 minutes on Marsh Road.
That's, that was agony.
True.
Jack?
Could I comment on how the money's spent?
Okay.
Topic?
Yes.
Two areas that I think we should increase our expenditures, and both are in the area where the parcel tax money is supposed to be spent. One is police. And the particular area of the police that I think we should spend more money on is traffic enforcement of speed limits. They used to have three motorcycle officers, and I think the cutback of the police department eliminated two of them. I live on Fair Oaks Lane, which is part of the freeway connecting Bay Shore to 280. The Fair Oaks Lane-Atherton Avenue link is the fastest way to get between the two, between points five or 10 miles above us and five or 10 miles below us.
Jack, we're bringing three motorcycles on board. We're bringing back three motorcycles.
Well, let's bring back the motorcycle drivers, too.
No, no, we're bringing back, according to Ed Flynn, I talked to him not too long ago, we're gonna be able to ride three motorcycles with people that know how to ride them.
Because they used to take traffic surveys in the past, and Fair Oaks Lane is a winding street.
Right.
And in one of the, maybe five or 10 years ago, more than 40% of the traffic was going over 35 miles an hour.
It's insane.
Our police in that period, and maybe still, have an unwritten practice of you don't pick at anybody unless they're going at least 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. And even those people, a lot of the times, don't get picketed. We also had studies about speed humps on Fair Oaks Lane to slow down the traffic. If you make this corridor between 101 and 280 less attractive, you'd have less congestion on Marsh Road, too. So I think that's a consideration. And then the other area is spending money on streets and road maintenance. Fair Oaks Lane has been covered over, covered over, covered over, three or four times. So the crown of the road and the middle of the road is probably a foot higher than it is on the sides.
As a flooding issue.
And the drop-off between the edge of the road and where people are supposed to walk is as much as six inches in some places. So I think Fair Oaks Lane and probably other streets in the town ought to have the roadway completely cleared off and repaved, starting from scratch, not with curbs on the side, but with gutters that are concrete and don't get worn down.
Shower and gutter.
Yeah. So I think we should increase what we spend on street and road maintenance and police for those reasons.
Good comments. Okay, anybody else?
I had a serious fall on a six-inch drop-off. It was a lunk. Fortunately, I just got up and went off, but it was the worst fall I've ever had, just because of that six-inch drop.
Oh, my goodness.
It was at night.
Yeah.
I didn't see it.
Well, that's when you were campaigning.
Yeah.
I remember that, yeah.
So, you know, that drop-off is, even on Virginia, when I go into Virginia now, it's a drop-off. When I turn left on Fair Oaks Lane to Virginia, it's about a six-inch drop. So, I mean, it's, it's quite, and it's a thoroughfare, too, George. You mentioned that Atherton, that was a thoroughfare. All that traffic goes on to Fair Oaks. None of it goes anyplace else. So it comes straight across, goes right out on Marsh Road.
And there's two or three major, like a slum which evaporates or there's another one.
Probably 75% of that traffic is not Atherton residents.
Right.
More than that.
Okay.
So parcel tax discussion, good discussion, lots of good ideas. It's gonna come back to us in July 17.
We'll bring it back in July 17 with a couple of options for the council.
Okay.
Based on the discussion.
Good. Okay, moving on to our third topic, and we have 35 minutes. It is the discussion of our council agenda and the commission and committee resolution provisions. We had changes in our committees and commissions, and let the city manager present the report.
I think, Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, you've got two items basically on your docket to look at. One is the resolution governing commissions and committees, and the other is the council member handbook. The handbook is designed strictly for new council members or council members who might be interested, and it provides a broad brush look at the Brown Act and a number of other tools of order, Rosenberg Tools of Order, whatever we're utilizing presently. Provides a broad brush look at that, provides a look at committees and commissions and what they do, what their charters are. It's just a handbook, basically. But we did make some revisions to the Resolution 1308 based on some council discussion workshop. One is, and some other concerns, we clarified the agenda preparation process.
Can we go through it?
Sure.
With your changes?
Sure.
If everyone has it in front of you. We're gonna look at page one of eight. There's a...
So the first one is on page one.
Let's not subsume.
I think it requires discussion.
Okay, fine.
How about we move on to two?
All right. I just want it to be really...
Thorough.
You know?
So what page are we on now, eight?
Two.
Two of eight.
Two of eight. At the top.
Page two of eight is, you know, the first part of the agenda prep was kinda confusing, and so that was clarified on how to get things actually on a commission or committee agenda. And the other one is how the commission or committee gets things up to the council level. So that's the change that's on page two.
Do you want comments on these, or?
Sure.
Yes.
So, let's see, first was, I think, I think we've discussed a number of times when we do this, that there was supposed to be wording put in, and I brought it up a couple times, that we agreed that the council, or the committee chair and the staff member assigned would agree the agenda. And, of course, there could be a difference of opinion, but hopefully the two, the adults seem to work that out. So I keep kind of following out. Second thing...
Is items to be added following a meeting between the committees, commission chair, and staff members?
These items may be added to the agenda following an agenda preparation meeting between the committee, commission chair, and staff members.
If y'all feel that's adequate, that's fine. The other comment I have is that we have all these things, like a committee recommends something, and then we say it's gotta be brought to a council within two months, but there's nothing like that with regards to a colleague's letter. And I think that there should be a timetable associated with a colleague's letter, both at the committee level as well as at the council level.
Well, this one just addresses the colleague's memo for committees.
And it says, "Add it to the next agenda." Finally, during the vote of the committees.
This is the document that's gonna be amended next. We'll bring that back to it next year.
Well, there's a lot of lists in that.
There is some overlap, but this is covered, but this is basically a lot of information for the meeting number. This is, these are all some uses, ongoing documents.
Okay. Then, okay, fine. Then we have, and I realize this may be repeat of what's there, but, you know, of course, you gave us a lot to read, and I tried to read it all. I didn't, I wasn't successful, but...
Well, that's what we're talking about now.
Okay, so we say advocate, and I know that we've had a lot of discussions on this. It says, "Members of committees and commissions are encouraged to advocate." This is further down, it wasn't edited.
What page are you on?
I'm on the same page.
Two of eight.
Two of eight.
Advocate in that, okay, so that has not been changed, or you'd like to change it?
Well, I just wanted to discuss. It says, "Commissions and commissions are encouraged to advocate positions to the city council on matters of the purview of the committee or commission." Now, I think what we were saying was, when the council has made a decision, we don't want committee members saying, "I don't, I didn't agree with that," or whatever, okay? But I think that committee members are allowed, if they dissented, are allowed to, just as today, anybody, any resident can call up a council member and say, you know, "I'm your constituent, blah, 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 I don't support this thing." And I think that we can't control people's freedom of speech, you know? We don't want people on the, on, say, when certain committees had a website disagreeing with a council decision. I think that that's really how some of this came up, but this is saying that the council member can't call up and express their opinion, which is a violation of their constitutional rights.
The committee member... I think that it probably means more so that we should, they shouldn't represent themselves as a committee member and a position.
Right.
Versus, you know, you can independently say anything.
Well, we need to clean it up, then. Okay, we need to clean it up, and I realize it wasn't edited, but I'd like to bring that up, because there were several things which came in here where we've taken edits, and I assume we got them from somewhere else, or maybe you did it yourself, but it looks like there are some things where it says they were essentially saying, hey, like, you know, if you're on a council or committee, you're not allowed to say anything.
I don't think that's what it said.
That's how I read it.
Actually, by the way, no sarcasm intended. You do give up a lot of First Amendment rights when you take an appointed or elected position. And I can give you lots of those if you'd like, some of which are called felonies. If you try to use your official position to influence a decision of another body, or if you take money from somebody because they're expressing their gratitude for how they would like you to vote on their project, that's a felony. And so you do give up a lot of rights that I don't give up, and other members of the public don't give up. But what this is, what this was getting at is, the Fair Political Practices Commission has said, when somebody walks up to that podium, he's saying, "Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you know, I'm on your transportation committee." Well, why'd they say that? Because they want favoritism. There's no other reason in the world to make that comment, because you already know that they're on the transportation committee. And what that does is, to the rest of the general public, they go, "Oh, wait a second, that guy's an insider, he's getting a special deal." And the Fair Political Practices Commission has said, the law says you cannot use your position as a planning commissioner or a traffic commissioner, you can't use it to try and get some special advantage. That's illegal. And what I teach them at the classes when I go to them, even though Jim doesn't like them, they...
I don't dislike them, I just don't want to spend an hour hearing you talk about the same thing, time after time, that's all.
You only get it once every couple of years, but the point that I make to them is, if you wanna get up and say, "I'm just a citizen, thank you." If you wanna get up and say, "I'm just a citizen, and this impacts me, and I wanna talk," but if you get up and say, "I'm a disgruntled minority member of the subcommittee or the committee," that's not okay.
Okay, no, I, okay, so I, the, I think that we just need to clear up the intent is this, you know, and I think in some of the other ones where it was in the body of the document, like 30, page 30, et cetera, there are other, I guess I could tell you the pages. It just, it looked like we've embellished and we've grown things that were in here, and I thought that it's a tad bit over the top. Not to say that maybe there isn't some intent in there, but just the literal reading was a little over the top, so that was my comment on that.
Okay.
And I expanded. I've got all the comments, also.
Okay, but can we just stay here, because, see, I read this first sentence, that members of committees and commissions are encouraged to advocate positions to the city council on matters under the purview of their committee or commission. To me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that if an item has come before the council for a decision from, say, the planning commission about whether or not to approve a contested heritage tree removal or something, and members of the planning commission come up and speak on behalf of why they decided in the planning commission, in their planning commission role, the way they did, I think, but they do that, they've done it all the time here.
And they're not supposed to.
They're advocating their positions to the, so explain to me that first sentence then.
That first sentence is something that was put in there back when Richard Nixon was probably governor. It has, it has been so ripped up and torn up and thrown out by court decisions and other things. Let me explain the problem with that. You have, you have the planning commission, right, and they have jurisdiction. And they basically have a legal...
But they make a recommendation.
They make a recommendation. The recommendation doesn't come to you from three of them or four of them, it comes to you from the planning commission as a body.
Right, right.
If anybody else stands up and poses that as part of the body, they are speaking out of what they should be doing. The decision comes from the body, and it's usually presented by the chair or a designated spokesperson. The FPTC says it's not okay to sit for them all to come traipsing in here and say, "I want to file a dissenting opinion." They can file it at the planning commission, and, you know, you could say, you know, if you want, you could ask the dissenting opinions come along with it. But the problem is, they make findings, and those findings support the ultimate position of the majority.
So it has to be collective. So that was a question I had here. I wrote down collectively or independently, and my comment was, I say it should be collectively. Collectively, they can say, or the chairman should come, said the committee voted, and he could even say, "On a split decision," or whatever, "But this was our recommendation."
That's what you should do.
But they shouldn't come independently.
And if they do come...
And so it shouldn't say, "Members of committees and commissions."
Just say, "The committee and commissions are encouraged to advocate their collective..."
The study session is working, because it's supposed to point out to staff areas where there's confusion and need to clarify. And here's a good area. I actually read this, and I read this the way I was thinking. What it meant was that they have the right to come before you, even if they've lost the decision, but not as committee members, as individuals. And it doesn't say that, per se, and it needs to be clarified.
Right, right, right. Good. Do you wanna continue?
Well, I don't have a comment. Oh, I do have a comment on the, thank you.
Educational materials?
No, the, on the voting members and the committees and things like that. So I was on section three. I'm happy to, wait, just the next one.
Oh, well, let's look at the website changes that we're making, okay?
That one was just a modification. We're coming up with a cohesive town website, and we're folding in, you know, committee pages for planning, for transportation, et cetera. Any page that is created for that respective committee should be included in the town's website, be consistent, book, be on contact, that sort of thing.
Well, yeah, and the content needs to be approved, which is what we said before, and which is very appropriate.
That's true.
Okay. So appointment...
And the town base for that, if I'm correct.
The minutes go in there?
The minutes are, will be in a separate section on the website, under agendas and minutes.
Committee.
For the committee, yeah. It'll be up there.
Yeah, just like, just like it is now, but it'll look a lot different. So, hopefully. Okay, so there, in paragraph three, there are changes. City council representatives, do you wanna take that?
Sure. The change that we made there was that it's kind of based on the discussion at the workshop, that council members should serve as liaisons to the committees. So appointed city council members and city council member alternates serve as liaison to commissions and committees, don't serve as voting members on those commissions or committees. And one example of that in work, in working form, was the mayor and council member Dobby serving on the CCAC as the council members representative to that committee, but they did not vote on the recommendation of folding it for council. So my, my com...
Yeah, this is, this is a substantive change.
Right. So, and my comment on this really was on the next page, but I, I don't remember that we actually took any action at that session. I do agree that what we said was a good idea, but I also thought that we said we were only gonna have one council member, since it's just a liaison, you don't need two. And I didn't see anywhere in here where we made that edit. For each, to discuss it, that would be one, and two, because further on, it talks about, in the next section, you know, there's a, there's two committee council members on each one. So I know we didn't make a decision, but I thought that we had discussed it pretty thoroughly, and everybody said, "Yeah, yeah, it should be the city citizens, and we should just have one person as the liaison."
Yeah, you're correct. That should be clarified, and that you have a primary and an alternate, correct?
Yeah, and the alternate only goes if the primary can, which I think you cover that elsewhere, but it's not clear, unless somebody disagreed, but I thought we...
No, that's, I, I agree.
But the council members can't vote?
No, no.
That's a...
At the committee level.
At the committee level.
At the committee level. They're more of a liaison, a report out, just like in the finance committee, instead of the mayor being the chair of the finance committee, we...
So you're no more council members of the chairman?
No.
That's in here.
Right, right.
And the answer. We want the committees to be citizen committees, where the citizens are active participants and taking more of a leading role. And the comment, and I think everybody agreed, Greg, was that on some of the committees, the committee members, citizens defer to the council members to lead the discussion, make the decisions, and they vote the way the council member is pushing. And so what we're trying to do is say, well, we're asking them to be advisory and give us the feel for what the community wants, and as such, the council member should play us a role in it. It makes a lot of sense.
To avoid voluntary switch?
Voluntary?
Yeah, you guys...
No, we're, we're just, are, are you being paid to do this? We're all volunteers. We're all doing this voluntarily.
There's not a legal reason to do that.
No, uh-uh.
It doesn't hurt legally, because if you think about it, some...
That's next.
Planning commission decisions are in fact appealable to the city council, so there's a problem there.
We have to impose the rest of taxes.
But there are no council members, but on any of the committee decisions, you know, recommendations that are going to the city council, that means that council member got to vote, or those two council members got to vote at the committee level on a recommendation, and perhaps, it could be the swing votes, it shaped how it goes to them. Now there's two out of the five, so it kind of is a fait accompli, and it just makes it more of a citizen-driven process.
That's substantive change, that's for sure.
It is, it's substantive change.
Do you like it?
I'm thinking about it. There's a couple of, there's more responsibility on the chair.
Well, on the committee as a whole, actually, yeah.
Well, but the chair has the responsibility to make sure that the members participate.
But I think the goal, I think the goal is to get good quality information and, you know, good dialogue to the council without the perception that maybe the council members that were sitting on there at one had any influence there, and that there would be no influence.
As long as you get enough volunteers, that'll work, but if you start not being able to fill the committees, then it's gonna fall to the chair.
Oh, I don't think we're gonna have a problem with that. I think that the tide has turned there, and we're getting lots of people who are willing to volunteer for these committees. And as you know, it used to be that the finance committee was only made up of...
Two council members.
Yeah, which was ridiculous, and that, you know, that was, that changed in 2009. So we opened it up.
So with this, with the going just with one, then I think that one of the things you might wanna consider is having, when you're doing the agenda, having the council member liaison and the staff member work with the chair on agendaizing.
I agree.
And so maybe we make that change in addition to cut back to one, but, and they don't have a voting thing, but they would be consultative in the, in the agenda preparation.
Okay. Jim, you can raise your fingers.
Wow.
No, I think he's scrolling.
See which way the wind was blowing.
I was just trying to decide how we're gonna fill the next 15 minutes.
Did you not read this? There's two pages here, Jim.
Yeah, well...
And I'm gonna ask Teresa to tell me, you know, to talk about the handbook, and, 'cause she put this together, she has worked very hard to put this together. And we have a code of conduct that I think we want to...
There's a lot to discuss about the handbook.
Okay, let's keep going.
One of the things I disagree with in the handbook.
All right, so now, are we going to page three?
I, okay.
Well, I'm, I'm done with page three, because I recovered it.
Oh, yeah, I am, too. I'm on page four.
Okay, let's see, I have no comment.
Chairperson and staff each committee. We, city manager changed from February to July, because we're coming down on this fiscal calendar, and clearly saying that we're not gonna serve as chair or vice chair. We changed the name of the community.
Now, there are current chairs and or vice chairs made up of council members on one or two of the committees. I would suggest that if you're in a current role, that when that role gets refreshed, then you drop off as chair or vice chair.
So in other words, don't accept any role.
I don't know, the mayor may decide, Jim is in charge of the environmental programs committee, in which case that takes care of that problem. Like, I think that's a good way to make a decision.
What are you saying? You don't wanna be in the environmental program? Only one of us can be on it, Jim.
Okay.
I can see that you're heartsick about that. I can see you are just devastated.
It was my idea on the tree, you know? Jim's idea was the champagne.
And I donated the champagne. That was my champagne.
I didn't get any.
I still think it was a good idea, and I didn't get any either.
The other change was changing communities center advisory committee to civic center.
And I have a comment, though.
That came as a recommendation.
No, I agree, and I, all the things that it does, all that stuff, there's no issue with that. I just, when I was reading the whole thing, every one of these things, it starts out that says, "Act as an advisory capacity to make recommendations to the council." Every one of them says that, it starts out that way, except for this one. And I suggest that we add that, act as an advisory, it's the same comment, act as an advisory capacity, you know, in certain matters that is described herein to, as council to the, to the council.
It's the only one that has the word advisory in the title.
Well, I thought about that, but I did notice that it didn't have it and state it in every other one.
Consistency.
It may be, it is.
Consistent.
So does it, yeah?
The rest of the edits were great, and I think that environmental programs, I thought we had scaled it back to twelve, you know? I thought we'd said it was gonna be seven or five or something like that. I didn't know that they, I don't see a need to make it twelve, honestly.
Well, if you could get twelve, wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah, we have to have it over here, but of course, actually, they get it left on the people with one council member. You know what, we're generally getting three people sometimes. We can't get Frank Merrill, the company, he's the longest living environmental programs committee member ever, there is.
Let's not, let's not make a decision on that, let's leave it the way it is, right now, okay?
This is a consideration. We're not making any decisions.
Thank you. I hear that.
Good, good, okay.
All right, and the next section is the council member handbook, and this is Mayor and Theresa, and the city chairman done some sensitive work on the handbook, so Theresa?
Handbook was taken from Melo Park, we realized to be accident specific. It incorporates the code of conduct, which I believe may need some revisions as well. It's attached as a pen, is the city council rules and procedures, which will be updated by the city attorney and brought back to the city council in July. It also includes Rosenberg's rules and orders, the IACAD policy, purchasing policy, the U.S. policy, and the resolution governing committees and commissions that we just reviewed. That's it.
So I've made some comments throughout, but I'm happy to share them independently, collectively, and... This is, we're talking about the handbook now. That's right, you were...
I've got some comments to make. I've read it all, but I can try to fire it. I just wanna make it clear, George, very clear to you, that you are not gonna tell me who I'm gonna talk to, what I'm gonna say to them, and tell me how to behave. You, as a paid employee of the town, are not gonna tell me, as an elected representative of people, what I'm gonna do, what I'm gonna say, who I'm gonna say it to. And I just wanna make that crystal clear. It just amazes me to see this stuff in here, that, I mean, if I was a CEO, which I've been many times, and I went to the board and I said, "Board, this is the way you have to behave," I would have been a CEO for all thirty seconds. So don't try to tell me what I'm gonna do, who I'm gonna talk to, what I'm gonna say to them, because it's not gonna work. And I'm just, I wonder, this thing here is, I mean, all along, I've been concerned that you're trying to prevent the council being involved with the employees, and whether you're gonna deny it or not, that's an impression I have, and I'm not gonna tolerate it, it's that simple.
Can you point out specific areas that you have objections to?
I could, but it's, you know, generally, it's all over the place here, but if I can find the paragraphs that mean it talks about council members' conduct, well, don't tell me how to conduct myself.
Wait a second, this is not coming from George, this was the city clerk and me, and quite frankly, this is why we...
Whoever it comes from, I'm not gonna obey it.
It's gonna come from the city council, whatever it does, and you can be censured by your colleagues, it doesn't come from staff. But, Jim, it doesn't come from staff.
Well, I'm just saying, let them censor me. You say it's illegal for me to talk to people, take me to court, you'll be the laughing stock of California.
Jim, I have never taken any council member to court, I'm on your side, I'm on your side.
I really was annoyed when I saw this. I'm really annoyed, and I'm still annoyed.
Point out to Theresa and me, who wrote this, the areas where you have concern, and we'll be happy, take a look at it.
Well, no, I think the one area that Jim has the most concern is the city council's code of conduct policy that was inserted into the handbook, and that was city council-approved in two thousand nine.
Well, I'm just saying, nobody is gonna tell me, no paid employee this time is gonna tell me how I talk to people, what I have, what I say to them, and how to behave myself.
That's my...
That is totally inappropriate, and I'm not gonna take any notice of it.
What page is that?
It starts on page...
I'm gonna talk to whoever I want, I'm gonna say whatever I want to them, and I have to say, in the past, I've thought I'd be one of the council members that had a very good relationship with everybody, and, you know, it doesn't...
You should, you'd agree.
It'll make any censoring. Well, it looks like parts of that were strengthened, or maybe there were different